I'd like to call the Fayetteville County Council Regular Meeting to order. Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty one, at six o'clock P. M. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved in second for the approval of the agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Poses nay. So let the record show, seven zero. Invocation by Councilman Trap.
Let us pray. God, thank you for allowing us to gather once again. Please let it all decisions made by this council tonight be in the best interest of Fayetteville County citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
We're down now to public presentation is none, down to item six, first public comment section. Ms. Roberts, okay, let's call.
Tonight, we have five, yes, or five people signed up to speak. First up will be Mr. Cal Harrison. Hey, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. There are a group of folks from Ridgeway and Highway thirty four area that signed up tonight because of our concern over the mine that has been proposed on Highway thirty four. Don't really have much time here to get into a lot of details. But through the process, it's been a real learning experience for everybody involved. And we've learned a number of things that DHEC is not considered in this permitting process. And there are things like the fact that the same time that they're permitting this huge mine, which would be discharging water into the Dutchman Creek Basin. There's also a DHEC study on trying to find out the cause of water pollution and issues in Lake Watery. And they're spending millions of dollars on it. And it's really just two different sides of DHEC. There's a scenic byway that the state DOT is supposed to vote on tomorrow that would go right by this mine. And the folks at DHEC have not really considered and said that they can't consider what's going on. There's also the question of the Ridgeway's water source, the community well, which is actually right in the vicinity of the mine. And the mine would actually be in their water protection zone. DHEC is saying that they don't have the regulations to actually take that into consideration. And there are several other things that really we need DHEC to sort of slow down and put the brakes on this process. And we're coming to you as our elected officials because we don't elect anybody at DHEC. We really don't have a voice there. And so there are a lot of people, we're really kind of at the stage where we're desperate for your help. And what we think that you can do is provide comments to DHEC. The deadline for comments is the twentieth of this month. And we'd like to get you some information in writing that we think that once you read it, you'll feel that there is a strong reason for you to comment and ask DHEC to consider these things carefully before they make any decision. And I don't know if, because I realize that we couldn't get on the agenda today. I don't know if there's something where you could designate someone on the council to speak for you to provide these comments. Or if possibly you could hold a special meeting and we'd be happy to lay it all out for you. And then you could make a decision on whether or not you want to send a letter to DHEC. But that's what we're asking for at this point is just for you to take that step and give us that larger voice to make sure that DHEC considers everything before they render a decision. And don't just ramrod this thing through.
Mr. Harrison, I really didn't want to interrupt you. But one of the things we try to do is to make sure that the first public comment is items that's on the agenda. So again, we want to thank you for your concern, thank you for coming and that kind of thing. And one of the things we can do is try to talk about that. But like you said, it's not on the agenda tonight. So again, I want to thank you for your concerns and that kind of thing. And normally, we don't make any comment afterwards and that kind of. But since you were speaking from some things that was not on the agenda.
Okay, I was thinking that it fell under ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Because ultimately, it would be, you know, a resolution or some sort of communication from
Okay, thank you, sir.
the county council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, we actually, we have two others who are signed to speak about the same matter. So typically, those items have to be on the agenda.
Yes.
So I'll leave that up to you.
Yes, sir. Those items normally have to be on the agenda, yes, sir. And I guess.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I did have two others that are shared matter. They're speaking on matters that are on the agenda.
Okay.
Next up, we have Mr. Jeff Schaefer. And he's speaking on, it's like ordinance seven seventy three.
We got three minutes up here and I'll try not to take a lot of time. I'm as confused as ninety nine percent of the community in regards to your actions with Mr. Taylor. Your job, if you're not thoroughly indoctrinated, is to bring harmony and prosperity to this community. Sadly, that's not what's happening. You requested thousands of dollars to print your own newspaper. That's great. Let me give you your first headline. Council members known affectionately as the majority squad of four are under state audit for abuse of public funds. Or secondly, you hired a new county clerk for sixty five thousand when you had an experienced person for fifty two thousand. Think about this. You folks are operating a multimillion dollar business. Your radical ideas are not mainstream popular. Your push for building monuments and housing projects have nothing to do with economic development. How about taking those millions and cleaning up Winsboro storefronts? Refurbish the town's physical image. Merge the town police department with the sheriff's office. Do something that will benefit the taxpaying citizens. Let me get back to Mr. Taylor. Don't you think that a major decision like removing him from his post would have serious repercussions? No one in their right mind wants to work for the four of you. Obviously, there are mistrust issues. You folks seem to be unable to communicate your ability to work out any indifferences with various personnel of the county workforce. Along with the administrator, you managed to say goodbye to several key employees who obviously didn't want to stay or work with you. And when you lose the best people, I can tell you, it's impossible to replace them with better people. When you have to hire an overpriced consultant to assist the temporary administrator, we have to ask you, why'd you fire the administrator? The council's reputation is definitely floating in the toilet. Lastly, you have no business in directing who, how, and what gets done. Your job is to vote on the county business, not to run it or ruin it. What are you doing? What you are doing will all be undone at the next election, and that will be your legacy. Your pictures will be hung on the wall of shame next to several other council members who thought they were above the council, the citizens who put them there. My advice, and please listen carefully. Write up your resignation. Show this community that you have some sense of decency. Say you had no idea what this job entailed, and you're sorry for disappointing your neighbors and your friends. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Randy Bright speaking on ordinances seven seventy three and seven seventy four.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. In so many ways, this agenda is a mini capsule of what's taken place since the beginning of the year with our county council. First of all, there's really no movement forward listed on the agenda. Haven't had this year. Second of all, on the ordinances that I referenced, what the ordinances point out, we really screwed up the budget process. Of course, we could see that during budget process. We never did get, the citizens never did get to see a budget worksheet. I don't know if you guys ever looked at the budget worksheet. No one ever looked at it yet. Yeah, it's funny, I agree, it's funny because you can't produce. You can't do your job. To me, it's not funny. It may be to you. Going to Hilton Head might have been a lot of fun for you. That's good. But by, good idea, you have your mask on so we can't see you trying to deflect with laughter. The whole point of this screw up with your ordinances, you admit that there need to be roof repairs. And you made the claim, Chairman Bell, last meeting, oh, we gotta get these roof repairs. There, you didn't know that in June when you did the budget? What were you thinking in June? You didn't know that economic development was important to a county like ourselves where we ranked the tenth highest unemployment rate in the state? You didn't realize that economic development made a lot, especially in COVID recovery? The other issue with the budget that you point out, why we're having to redo the budget, is you didn't look at the, or maybe you didn't know how, the balance sheet and the income statement. If you would have looked at the balance sheet and income statement from the last audit that was presented in January, you would have realized that we have a real revenue problem. But we hardly discussed revenue at all. And when Clarence Gilbert mined a million dollars that we had coming, million dollars plus, we just kind of dismissed him and didn't do anything for it. And I haven't heard yet about selling assets like the incinerator. What are we doing with that? We paid what, two and a quarter million dollars or two for that? Or a quarter million dollars, excuse me. And we're not using it? So aren't we going to try to sell it? So we overlooked the revenue. Yes, we did some cuts, but they were just kind of cuts where we wanted to cut and we disliked the particular departments. I don't know. But this whole, thank you.
Okay. And I guess the other two speakers was?
They were on the mine.
Okay, I'm going to say something. Mr. Harrison, we did hear you and what you're saying, okay? We're down now to number seven, public hearings none. Number eight, ordinance and resolution and orders. Item A, second reading ordinance, number seven seventy three, to make one million and fifty thousand dollar supplemental appropriation for the two thousand and twenty one, twenty two fiscal year for the capital projects to include community mini park on Overlook Road in Black Stockton, upgrades to Willie Lee Robinson Park and roof repairs to the DHHS building.
Can we get a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, I'm a little confused by this bundle ordinance. You know, we've added, we know for a fact that we need a roof on the DHHS building. And we've allotted, I mean, you've got money here allotted for mini parks and another park. And on our last meeting, we had the gentleman come in reference to the courthouse. And your statement was, we want to see you cut the budget on the courthouse. My thing is, we need to do as much as we can for that courthouse because I'm gonna tell you right now, eventually, some of us gonna need that courthouse.
Any other discussion? Mr. Paul.
I just wanted to put on the record, just in case some people didn't see it. Three hundred and fifty thousand is going toward the mini park. A hundred and, I think, fifty thousand is going to Willie Robson Park. And the rest of the money is going toward the roof on the DSS building. My question I have is, are we going to do a supplemental for employees as well? You are going to create more recreation places, which require people to staff it. More grass needs to be cut, and buildings need to be maintained. With that million dollars, do you know that Sheriff Montgomery could put another deputy on patrol for seventeen years with a million dollars? And I think we had a park on Overlook at one time. You think we?
I think we did a bit ago.
Do you know the reason is out there now?
I do not.
Well, I think the park wasn't on the overlook, drive was on the dirt road. But this was on the overlook drive, the paved road.
Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Poses nay. Let the record show four zero.
Four three.
Four three. Four three. Second reading, B, second reading, ordinance number seven seventy four, to make a supplemental appropriation of seventy five thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty one, twenty two fiscal year so as to authorize funding for the position of project manager within the Economic Development Department.
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Poses nay.
Nay.
Let the record show six zero, six one. Okay, we're now down to number nine, board's minute, commission minutes none. Boarding Commission appointments none, old business none, new business none. County Administrator report. It's the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Sheriff Montgomery with us and also Ms. Terry Smith from the sheriff's office. As we are nearing completion, getting further in construction, we have heard from the sheriff's office about considerations that they would like for council to hear. So they are here tonight to present those.
Good evening, Chairman, Council. County Administrator, thank you for having us tonight. Did all y'all get the letter that we sent out? Everybody received it? So I'm not going to read that word for word. But we do have some concerns about the mountainside, our office space in the mountainside. The main thing is safety. The windows are on the ground level in investigation offices, in my office, victim's assistance office, all this is ground level with the big windows. Where anytime you have public in those places, somebody would be able to come by and see them sitting down talking to us or do some type of harm to them if they really wanted to. Another big issue is we have over seventy five sex offenders that have to register once a month through us. They have to come to the office and register. And we're going to have to wreck building right next door to our office. And a lot of these people walk, they come to our office on foot. So we don't know if they're going to be walking around the campus, how that's going to be worked out. If that's even something we should be doing.
Mr. Montgomery, could you talk a little louder?
Yeah, that really concerns me with the sex offenders. And not only sex offenders, we've got all kind of people coming in and out of our office that we deal with on a daily basis. Another problem is space. We have a lot of training equipment, equipment that we issue to deputies, that we have to have a place to put this stuff. We don't have that, that was not added anywhere for us to, any space for us to put that kind of stuff. And offices are smaller than offices that we have now. We have no room for growth at all. Got actually less office space than what we have now. Offices are smaller. So if we ever want to grow the department like we're trying to grow the county, that's not going to happen. We're going to have to build another building anyway. Did y'all have any questions for me?
Yes, sir, I got several questions. One of them is, did you bring these concerns forward with Mr. Taylor and others around the safety issues, the space issues, and all of these kinds of things?
These concerns were brought up day one when we started this project.
Um, go ahead, Mr.
Sheriff, what would, what would be, um, your idea on what to do going forward, staying in the location you in now?
I'm gonna leave that up to y'all, uh, but, but we're comfortable where we are. Um, we need a little bit more office space where we are, but, but we're comfortable where we are, if that's possible.
Um, Mr. Carter, I know one of the other things, you've had Mr. Driggers kind of look at this issue. Um, what, what did y'all, what do y'all think about it?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Driggers if he'll, um, come up for, for a few minutes and just kinda talk about what we have discussed, um, in terms of, cause you know, all employees fall under our scope. Um, so safety and, um, liability concerns are obviously our top priority. And, um, but, Mr. Driggers, uh, if you don't mind just coming up and, yeah, that's fine. And, and he has done a great job of digging into the construction piece of this and contractual obligations and information that we've been looking at as we move forward.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, it's a pleasure to, uh, to be here with you this evening. Um, just to give you a little bit of, of idea of, of, of how I bring some expertise to the table to assist you, I have thirty-one years, uh, in local government service in South Carolina. My last twenty years as the city administrator in Greer. And in that role, we did a number of construction projects, uh, that, uh, that I had the responsibility of, uh, of leading those, uh, from, uh, what we called cradle to grave, uh, from idea and conception to final construction. Uh, we had the great, uh, ability, the great pleasure to be able to do those projects uh, in a way that we brought them in, uh, under schedule, under budget. Uh, and that was very, very important for our elected officials, uh, as we, as we embarked on those types of projects. Mr. Carter asked me to evaluate the Mount Zion Institute project. One of the things that I wanted to do first, uh, was to look at what your risks, uh, were involved in that project. And, uh, and I don't think that we could look at risk any other way, other than truly what are your financial risks? Now, there are others that are out there, and the sheriff spoke a little bit about that as well. Uh, and those are community concerns that, uh, that the sheriff has responsibility for looking at, you as a county council have responsibility for looking at. Uh, but, but truly looking at it from an economic perspective, uh, I was charged with that responsibility of saying, uh, wha- what would, what could potentially cost you more? Could it cost you more for the sheriff to stay where he is currently located in the facilities? Or could it cost you more if you required him to relocate? And I know that there are a number of, of community, uh, concerns. There are a number of community perspectives relative to that. There's history involved in that, and, and that's not what I'm here to address. I am simply looking at you from your best interest perspective. Uh, what are the risks that you take, um, either receding or proceeding? Um, and, and in evaluating that, uh, my greatest concern for you is that the, there are certain unknowns. Um, what I am told, and, uh, the documentation has been provided, is that the sheriff's department originally believed that they were going to occupy, occupy more space, and therefore they would have more of their personnel that was able to be in that space, and they were able to distribute that, those personnel in different types of ways. For whatever reasons, over time, uh, some of that has been shifted, uh, for other uses and, and less of that has been made available. One of the most economic beneficial things that you could do would be to centralize operations. Whether that centralized operation is for the sheriff and his department or it is for the county administrative offices, whether that's the courthouse and the operations that take place there. Anywhere that you can maximize your efficiencies in, uh, doing centralized, uh, services, uh, you're going to eliminate certain duplications, uh, that would take place otherwise. And it's just inevitable that that's gonna happen to you. And so when I, when I tried to start looking truly at what some of those risks would be for you, uh, first one that came to mind for me is the construction cost. What are the changes that you may or may not make relative to what those construction costs will need to be? From a safety perspective for officers and for the public, if the sheriff is to locate in this facility, there will need to be changes to the physical structure of that building. I think the greatest risk that you have in doing that is that you have agreements with a developer that you would construct that building in a way that allows him to utilize, uh, tax credits. And for those primary tax credits are historic tax credits. And the tax credits, those historic tax credits specifically, require certain type of windows to be in the building, certain type of visibility of, of, of the aesthetics of the building. Well, those aren't always in concert with what your public safety needs may be. But you've made an obligation with a developer to be able to use those tax credits, and he has indeed issued those tax credits. And if there's anything that occurs that would reverse that, if he were to lose any portion of that or all of those, I'm concerned that there would be a liability for the county, uh, for that loss as well. And so you're, you really are in a conundrum. I mean, it, it's, you know, do we, do we spend money to go forward? Or do we spend money to do something from a different perspective? Um, I, I think your, I think your project is on an extremely tight budget. You're going to have cost overruns, uh, on this project. Most of those cost overruns have already been approved. I mean, that was truly when the nine-one-one center and the changes that were required to do that, uh, were approved. Obviously, you felt that you needed to do that, and you've made decisions to move forward. Can't reverse those types of things. Those decisions are made and you've moved forward. Uh, but they will have implications for you, particularly financially as you move forward. Those changes require the, the general contractor that is on site, um, that they are entitled to under their contracts. They are entitled to general conditions. They expect that they're gonna be on a job site for a certain amount of time. Uh, they have certain risk in that as well, if there are things that they do that causes them to get behind. But if either the owner, in this case, the developer, or the user, in this case, the county, if either are causing changes to that developer that extends that construction timeframe, then there's a legitimate, there's a, there's a legitimate right for those folks to request for compensation for those general conditions going forward as well. And we're facing that right now as we move forward. So what we're trying to do is, we're simply trying to, to look at all of those schedules. We're trying to expedite everything that we can from the construction perspective. We have, uh, we're, we're on site watching that construction, um, regularly so that we're protecting the interests of the county, uh, while, while they are, you know, while they are in the process of building this. It's a, it's just a unique project. It's, it's actually a very imaginative, it's a very, uh, it's, it's not unusual to see public private that will happen, but, but specific to what you are facing now. Um, and talking with Mr. Carter as well, I believe that the most cost beneficial path forward for the county would be to allow the sheriff to stay in his existing situation, in his existing facilities, allow resources to be used for the building that we're in now for outfit of that. We've got some engineering studies that have given us some cost on that. They've, they've got some age to them, uh, but we can relatively determine kind of what, you know, time value of money would do for us on a project like this. Um, because to go into that facility, leave, um, leave other operations decentralized as well, um, in my opinion, I believe that you would spend more money requiring or following through with that, that the sheriff would relocate to those facilities. I do believe that in the end, you would spend more money with that relocation than you would allowing him to stay in the community and, and of course addressing the concerns that he has about public safety. Again, I'm only looking at it from the cost perspective. You and he are looking at it from multiple community perspectives.
Um, sir, I guess one of the things that continues to, and, and I've told you and I've told the sheriff and I've spoken to Mr. Carter, one of the things that's very frustrating is, is that we, we here at the eleven hour, okay, we got a concern with the parking. Okay, that, um, the parking too is gonna be an issue, especially in that community, uh, what you all told me, like, don't, don't have near enough parking. Okay, um, we, we right at now, around ten million dollars. Okay, the way you heat it, they got all them open glass windows. So you, you're gonna have heat and air just, just, just blow out of the windows. I mean, um, I cannot understand why a sheriff who is elected countywide, okay, would not have his voice listened to by the decision makers. It is beyond me to understand that. And, and, um, and, and, and we, we, we at a, we at a crossroad. Um, you know, I, I've tried to voice these concerns, but now thi- this is a, this is a bad, bad situation. So I don't know who won. If you look at the sheriff department, they lost. If you look at the black community, they lost. If you look at the community down there, they lost. So I don't know who won. Even you were there when the, when the developers told us, um, it's gonna be break even. Are they gonna lose money? Okay, so, so who won? Did a few people who just wanted, um, fix up Mount Zion, are they the only ones that won? I mean, this, this has gone beyond where we ought to be. Um, I pull up some minutes, um, to see where I stood when we, when we did this thing. Okay, one, one of the things I said is this. I said, um, I says, um, I, I, um, um, I, I, I asked about it, and I'm, I'm getting to, it says, council member, Bell stated about adding the teach rich. He said the pro, the, the cost, what it will cost. And says, um, so Mr. Taylor showed him how the current building is leaking, has mold, and there's a real need that we get together for another building. However, he feels we made a grave mistake because there are other developers who build new buildings with the same type financing. He feels by the time we get this building in three to five years, the building will already be out of date. And he thinks this is a bad mistake. People talk about my decisions, that was one. Okay, and, and, and I'm serious. We gotta come up with how we solve this problem. And, and, and again, that's why I wanted the sheriff to come. I voiced my concerns. This not, this not, um, as people like to say, a, a, a majority vote. This is a decision by council. And I tell you what, um, I cannot understand why we would do something of this magnitude with everybody losing. Everybody lost, except a few people who wanted to do Mount Zion.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
You do remember that you about spent three point five million dollars on recreation that could be used for a new sheriff's building, right?
Mr. Paulie, I've not directed any questions to you, and you will not direct any questions to me. Thank you. Bye. If it ain't three point five, it's two point five. Get your facts straight.
What about the mini park, it's those million dollars then?
I know that one of the concerns that, um, the community, community had expressed early on when, um, the question of Mount Zion came about was that we were going to be able to consolidate services in the county. That was one of the goals. So we're talking to the community now. We're back at talking to the community because essentially, the sheriff has made his wishes and concerns known. And it's very, very important, if we take a look at safety for our children and for the sheriff and for his officers and for everyone else coming and going from the new administration building. And I think that what we have to do is really take your information into consideration. We're going to have to, Mr. Driggers, take your information into consideration and really do a little bit more fact finding. It's not just talking about what the figures look like. Because that's what we talked about when we were told that it would be eight point five million dollars, not a penny more, was gonna be spent on Mount Zion. That's what we were told, eight point five million dollars. And just as was stated right now, we're near ten, ten million dollars, ten million dollars of the taxpayers' money. So essentially, we need to solve the issue. And solving the issue is very important and making sure that the public, that the money being spent again, or at least being considered to be spent is taxpayers' money, taxpayers' money. And we've gone around and around about Mount Zion, the benefits and the risk. And Mr. Smith, you know, we had these conversations many, many times. And essentially, you know, those were things that we talked about in terms of risk and other kinds of things. And we're, we were told that this is a, a great deal, that everything's going to be in one place and that the citizens are gonna be happy. Right now, the sheriff's not happy. We're not being safe with our, um, county people, the children and his staff. And we're still looking at more money. So, you know, I guess the unintelligent ones caused this. Thank you so much.
Um, um, I, I have another question for Mr. Mr. Montgomery. Uh, um, and I wanna be clear. Because, and, and I really need to be clear. Are you telling us that you shared all these concerns prior, um, as they, as they built the, as they was starting to build the building?
Absolutely. Everything except for the windows. We did not bring up the windows until later on. We didn't realize that the windows were gonna be, uh, open to the office space at the time. But everything else was, was brought, uh, was, was out and open from the get-go.
Any, any other, any other questions from council? Any concerns?
Is that something we had to do, like a motion on or?
No, it's, it's, it's just information. But, um, at some point, um, we, we gonna have to decide because at this point, um, um, the new administration building, um, supposedly will be completed in October. It is, it is designed such that the sheriff department comes over there. And along with everything else, um, if, if you all remember, we had to spend almost about a million dollars, and I think that's been, because of some of the work Mr. Driggers have done, that might be reduced some, some down. But, um, about a million dollars, um, for the, um, nine-one-one center. Um, they're having to go to, um, 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 go over there. So that's already been done. So now we, so you cannot not take them there, cause you already spent the million dollars. Okay, but if you know this situation was coming up, um, we could have left them in place over here and then had more room and just brought everybody else over. Um, we, we, we find ourselves in a very difficult, um, situation, but, um, we just gotta, yes, we're gonna have to make a decision. It won't be tonight, though. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Driggers. Is there anything else you need to tell us about what's going on?
Say a little bit, read the questions that you remember the council made.
Um, um, Sheriff, is there anything else you need to tell us? Um, because I think there's other things on your list, um.
The list is long, but, uh, if y'all need me, call me. If y'all need any questions or answer for me.
Because, because that, that list is, 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 it, it's pretty long, and you, and you didn't mention a lot of that was on that list.
I didn't wanna go through the whole thing. I know, I know y'all have got a copy of the list and, uh, but if y'all have any questions for me, I'm available to answer them. Thank y'all.
All right. Next item, um, under.
Next item, um, under administrator report is Firefly, Fireflies Employee Family Night, which will be August the 14th. And I wanna thank Mr. Gilbert for, um, helping me with this and, um, bringing this to, to me as a, as a, um, idea. Also, Mr. Ryan Smith also was very instrumental in making this happen. Uh, it'll be August the 14th, as I said. Um, the Fireflies, uh, will have a firework show after the game. And we have made it available for all employees to purchase their reduced tickets, uh, reduced cost tickets and food tickets also. So I just wanted to share that with council also. Um, it's a great way to show some appreciation for our employees. Um, so we're very proud to be able to do that and, and thank you for the help, for making that so much easier for us to, to tackle. So appreciate that.
I got a question, Mr. Coler. And I, I might've missed it. Number four, the approval of the minutes. We didn't have any minutes to approve.
No, sir.
Okay. Um, and can you tell me where the, on the second reading of the million and 50,000, can you tell me where that money's coming from?
It's, my understanding, it'll come from the general fund right now. They're speaking of what we have. There's obviously potential other funding sources and, and did I, did I say that right? Or I said general fund? He's asking about funding source for the, the Ordinance 773?
Um, do, do you wanna go to the mic? I'm gonna go to the mic.
I believe the roof, um, I'm pretty certain the roof will be able to be covered with the Recovery Act money. And some.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. How much Recovery Act money are we getting?
Um, the grand total is about 4.4, I think.
4.4 million?
Yeah, we'll get it in two installments. But I'm, I'm fairly certain the roof will be able to be covered by that. Um, I, I'm not, the, the parks maybe. There are some different provisions, you know, for, uh, tourist type, you know, outdoor space kind of things. Um, but I'm, I'm not as certain. They haven't been quite as clear about that as they are about, obviously, buildings that hold healthcare facility or that sort of thing, public buildings.
Have we received it already?
Um, we have not received all of it. We'll get it in two installments. Our first installment's, uh, slightly over $2 million, and we can draw that down. And then, um, you know, as we use it, we'll report, you know, start filing the interim reports.
Can you, uh, can you tell me what other things that recovery money could be used for?
Um, it's a lot of things. I think, I don't have my list with me. I think some of the things, um, that are, are spot on for the county. Um, the roof is one of the things. Um, like I said, tourist spaces. Uh, I think things like the Austin Trailhead are, are things that are gonna bring people into the community to spend money. That's, that's kind of what it's designed to, to get, get people spending money and get the economy flowing.
Would the farmers market be one?
I think it, it could fall under some of that. Um, there, uh, I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
Anything geared toward employees or?
Premium pay is something we can use it for, which is not, I'll explain that a little bit. We, we can't just give everybody a bonus. It would have to be a certain dollar amount added to each hour worked, you know, during COVID shutdown.
That's where I was going. So employees that worked during COVID, we could give them money.
We could, if, if they were, their jobs. And, and most, I think most, all of our employees that worked, that were not sent home do. Um, you know, interacting with the public, handling things. I mean, it, it even lists like open, opening the mail, which has been handled by outside people, things like that. Um, so I think anybody that was not sent home probably could get that premium pay for the hours they worked. There are some, um, some caps on that, um, like the average South Carolina salary. If you fall underneath that amount, uh, one and a half times that, you can get it. Everybody could still get it, but you just have to explain it differently in your reporting.
Right. With, could you send us a list of everything that it could be used for?
I can.
Thank you.
Questions, Jim?
Um, Ms. Bass, did we receive any of the rescue money from last year? Did we apply or did we receive any of that?
We received money from the CARES Act, yes, sir.
Could any of that money could went for salaries as well?
Well, it was a little bit different. That was a reimbursement based. So we had to request CARES Act money based on actual dollars spent. So we got reimbursed, um, with regards to salary for the CARES Act. Um, we got reimbursed for people that, you know, the actual time they worked or some of the disaster pay, such as we had to send certain people home for high risk or certain things like that, or shut down departments. That was geared more toward, um, helping the county keep, keep the employees safe, but keep them paid. This would be an amount, like, say, we were gonna give everybody $2 extra for the hours they worked during that shutdown. That's where it's a little bit different. Um, the CARES Act also reimburses for anything, supplies, or if we had to, um, do some structural changes to reroute traffic through buildings or all of the shields we had to purchase, PPE, all that kind of stuff. So CARES Act was more reimbursement. This is more, um, you know, economic recovery.
Some of the municipalities throughout the state, uh, some of the employers received bonus around November of last year. And they say it was coming from the CARES Act, that's not the case?
I, I don't know what other municipalities did or how they justified it.
The city, yeah, the city of Winsboro.
I, I don't know about what they did. No, sir. I can't answer that.
Um, as, as, as information, one of the things, we did not wanna, we did not wanna make sure all this information get to the, um, um, to public, because we don't know exactly what we were gonna do. But, um, um, I've asked Ms. Bass to sort of look at it in such a way. We done that some months ago in such a way that, that if we could provide some money to our employees, that we, we would do this. Okay, again, not, not, um, not taking this out there so people, so you have all information. I mean, so that you have a lot of stuff to take to the public, then something, um, it may not be able to happen. So we, she'd been looking at it, we've been working, trying to work through it and make sure we had the information, make sure we, we could do what we thought we could do. And one of the things it, it is, um, we did ask the question, um, about the roof at the Association of Counties meeting. What, what, what they, what they told me, um, Ms. Bass, and we gotta do some further work on that is, that may be the one thing we might not be, be able to do. Um, but they, um, they thought the courthouse would be one, and they thought the, um, the parks would be, be the other. But, um, um, a lot of the, a lot of the decisions, it's, it's an interim decision, it's a final interim decision, and they still need to do some work on it. But we got a lot of that information from the Association of Counties.
Thank you.
All right.
Is, is on me? Okay, um, heard the council reporting on, um, county council time. Anyone?
Yes, um, Mr. Chair. For the Fairfield County residents, taxpayers and all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to attend the most recent, uh, South Carolina Association of Counties, uh, meeting. It was really very, very instructive, very informational, and I really appreciate the opportunity to learn and to network with others. It really was, um, a good opportunity to really, um, not only discuss ethical leadership and public service as well as, um, strategic planning and understanding and seeking differences. So I certainly appreciate all of your, uh, support and are hap, and will be happy to share with anyone, uh, any of the, some information that I learned. I thought it was very, also very wonderful to hear that the young lady recognized at the conference was a Fairfield Central graduate. And, um, I'm trying to locate the young lady's name here. Um, but it was just absolutely wonderful to kind of see. Uh, she was the clerk of council for Calhoun County.
Orangeburg.
Orangeburg County, I'm sorry. And, uh, it was simply wonderful to, to see her recognized and to have.
Her name's Connie Porte. Connie Porte.
Connie?
Porte, yes.
Porte. Um, Ms. Porte, to see Ms. Porte recognized and to hear that she was a graduate, a graduate of Fairfield Central High School. So, you know, it was just absolutely wonderful to, to hear and to see and to witness. Thank you so much.
Um, any other council members?
Mr. Chair.
Um, Mr. Robson.
I just wanted to, um, quickly mention, um, that as we see that the COVID numbers are starting to rise again, I'm not sure if Mr. Coler is looking around to other agencies to see what their plan is. But do we wanna set a Plan B in place if, and I'm praying we don't go back to a shutdown? Just in case, uh, we do. And I think as a council, we probably need to prepare ourselves, ask some hard questions. Uh, A, has everyone been vaccinated? Are we incentivizing for vaccinations? It's just a lot of questions out there, and that's just some just off the top of my head. I think we may need to just take a look at just in case, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the things, um, um, as, um, Ms. Green, Kevashia Green has talked about, I believe this probably was one of the, um, the better, um, um, Association of Counties conferences. Um, one of the things that we, we've done, and, and others have too, um, since I've been on council, they've been asking a lot of questions about rural communities. And one of the things they did this year, and a big part is, is, is look at rural communities and see how the Association of Counties can help them. So that, that was a big plus. So a lot of the workshop was, was geared toward that. But just, just to let everyone know, um, um, I guess in about two and a half years, um, I've completed the, um, the Economic Institute, um, Level One County Council, um, Level Two County Council. And I'm also a graduate of, um, um, the Master NACO Leadership Academy. Um, and if I, if I, if I'm, what they told me was led by Colin Powell, is that, um, I'm probably the only one in the county that have, um, received this, um, uh, as a graduate of this. Um, and then, um, one of the things we did, um, while we were there, we were talking to people about the, um, and I know there's a lot of concern about broadband. Um, what can we do? So we, we, we were meeting with people, talking about, um, other things, other grants, other things available. So we, we'd be trying to do that, but we met a lot of people that can probably help us as we look at it going forward. So again, um, thank you. Can we get a motion, um, for executive session?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
As, as it moves in second, that we go into executive session. Item A, receipt of legal advice, discussion concerning possible sale of former hospital or property existing leasing, leasing pursuant to South Carolina Code. Item B, personnel matter, discussion regarding the county administration vacancy pursuant to South Carolina Code. Um, um, any discussion? Call in favor, let it known by aye?
Aye.
Hold this name. Let the record show seven zero, executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can we get a motion to come out of the executive session?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, it's been moved in second that we come out of executive session. No action was taken while in executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Pose its nay? Let the record show seven zero. Um, do we have any motions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we are to sell the former property of the, of the hospital and the existing leases.
I second.
It's been moved in second, um, that we sell the, um, former hospital property and existing leases. Any discussion?
We're going to put on the record how much money we sold it for?
Okay, is, um.
1.3 million.
Okay. I, I was going to ask Mr. Bargum, is that okay to do? Okay, 1.3 million dollars. Okay, it's been moved in second. Um, any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Pose its nay? Let the record show seven zero. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose its nay? Let the record show seven zero. We now stand adjourned.